Are you ready, guys? I'd like to call to order the city council meeting February 20th, 2025, 501 Main Street, 5:30 PM. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do they have a roll call? Renshaw?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mullen? Cackley?
Here.
Dade?
Here.
Andrews? Hillman?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Greenwald?
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Item number four, Mayor's Correspondence. We'll go real quick here. On Friday, February 21st, 2025, we have Free Family Night at the YMCA with games, foods, and inflatables, and it's funded by the Best U Coalition, and it starts at 5:30 PM. Number two would be Winter Gospel Jubilee at 5:30 PM at the Anchor of Hope Fellowship. Dinner starts at 6:45 and music, then there'll be music and fellowship. Item number three is Great River Players presenting Murder on the Orient at 17 South 6th at 7:30 PM, and then again tomorrow at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Saturday, February 22nd, 2025, we have sign language classes at the Keokuk Public Library starting at 11:00 AM. The Snezy Beaver is having a Chili Con Carnival with a contest starting at 6 o'clock PM, and music trivia at The Cellar starting at 8 o'clock PM. Sunday, February 23rd, Columbus Cooks Day Off at the KC Hall Pickup. It's only pickup, and it's 11:00 AM to 1 o'clock. It's chicken and noodles and sides. Then Thursday, next Thursday, a week from tonight, February 27th, is the Spirit of Keokuk Awards. Nominations all in, and they're voting as we speak. Get your tickets at Main Street Incorporated and the Keokuk Chamber office, or order them through the Keokuk Chamber website. Just a quick thing. I'd like for everybody to start, if you get the paper, if you don't get the paper, if you listen to the radio, or you don't listen to the radio, or you look at social media, reach out to all our athletes and our musicians and our students from our high schools and middle schools and Catholic schools and Christian schools. Keokuk's been well represented through the state this year, and we have great public and private schools to help our great parents and students to achieve their goals and an opportunity for their future. And so a pat in the back when you see their name in the paper, or when they bring home an A, or when they bring home a picture of the family, or a picture of the neighbor next door, a pat on the back and a big hug and a kiss makes a big difference to see somebody on the street that you've seen their picture in the paper, tell them what a good job they're doing and how they represent Keokuk. And as always, eat, drink, and shop local. Kindness matters. Item number five, citizens' request. If you have something that you need to speak about, you have about three to five minutes. Come to the podium, state your name and your address, and do we have anybody that wants to come? Come on up, Erica.
Hi, my name is Erica Barrett, and my address is 511 North Third here in Keokuk. I am coming on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. First of all, I just want to say that we had a really wonderful turnout for our Stained Glass Window Tour that happened this last Saturday. It was the first time that we had done such a thing, and just really grateful for the churches that participated. That includes St. John's, First Baptist, All Saints, St. Paul, First Lutheran, Trinity, and First Christian. It went so well that we hope it will continue, will be an ongoing thing. We had people, actually, we had the Facebook group Iowa Road Trip, which has almost 250,000 followers. They shared the event, and so we had some people come from all over the state. We had some people from council bluffs that came, and they spent the night here, and we had some people from Cedar Rapids, some other folks from Western Iowa, some from Mount Pleasant. They dined on Main Street. They came to the GRP play. I saw them when I was in the show, and they also spent the night here. So really excited about that and the tourism that it brought. And again, just really grateful for the churches that opened their doors to make that possible. We learned a lot about the history of these buildings and really some of the most beautiful pieces of art that we have, which was exciting. So it went really well. But the other thing that I was really excited to talk about is kind of a happy conclusion to a long process. We received an email today from the National Park Service. I just wanted to read part of it to you because I was really excited, and I told Kathy I just couldn't wait another council meeting. I just had to do it now. It just says, "Attached, please find the signed National Park Service letter concurring with the Iowa State Historic Preservation Officer's Certification of the City of Keokuk as a Certified Local Government." Congratulations. This official date of certification is today, so it's effective February 20th, 2025, and I did look it up on the nationalparkservice.gov website, and we do show up as a certified local government, which is very official. They also said that they want us to be featured on their Heritage and Historic Preservation National Park Service Facebook page, so we will, I'll write something up, and we'll post it, and then if the city wants to share it, they can. But the other part of that letter that I just wanted to share really quick was just opening it up right now. "We welcome the City of Keokuk as a local partner in the federal preservation program and look forward to working with them to preserve what makes their community special and significant. They have been added to our CLG database and can find their listing there, as well as more information to the CLG program." And for those who are not familiar with this CLG program, I just quickly wanted to go through why it's important. We've actually been a certified local government in the past, so I believe it was in the 1970s that we first received our designation. It's a big deal. It puts us on the national map for important historic places. It also makes it easier to register properties on the National Historic Registry, landmarks, districts, and that designation also allows us to have access to some funds for grants that we couldn't otherwise have access to. It allows for training and education to talk about preservation. It also will help with community pride and also other grants. So one of the grants that we should be receiving any day now is the Planning for Preservation Grant, a $22,000 grant that will allow us to do an inventory of the entire city to find out what buildings we need to focus on preserving and ways that we can make things like Main Street a historic district, which will then also be good for business because we'll get more tax breaks that way, some tax incentives. So it's really great for economic development and preservation of the things that we have, which are so great. So I want to thank, there's been so many people that have made that possible. The mayor is one that's really been working on this for years. There's been a lot of people on the Historic Preservation Board well before my time that have worked hard on this, and just really grateful for those people, the board members in the Historic Preservation Commission, and those that we've talked to about making this happen. So just wanted to share the good news, and thank you for all your help.
Thanks, Erica. Sometimes waiting is so hard, but then when it's all said and done, you're more excited. You did a great job, guys. Thank you. Anybody else? On up, Mr. Frye?
My name's Scott Frye. I live at 1701 Parkview Heights in Keokuk. Want to address some issues about the council. Things, a lot of things are going around town from things that's been going on lately. But just like we had Mr. Helenthal and Mr. Carroll's job, nothing gets you Brian. I think you're stepping in, doing a fine job. But we badged him about not living in Keokuk until he quit. So then we turn around, and now you don't have to live in Keokuk to be a police officer. Well, I watched the meetings on TV, and besides what's hearsay here and there, we got a new administrator. Out of a closed meeting, two people come out of that closed meeting, demanded Mr. O'Donnell's resignation immediately. Well, they didn't get it. You can go back on the tapes and watch it. They didn't get it. Finally, he had enough, so he resigned, but there wasn't any plan in place. And I don't understand not having a plan in place when you go after somebody's job. There is so much backstabbing going on on this council and in the city right now. We're never going to go anywhere until everybody gets along and we start supporting each other. And that's my feeling. I want this town to grow. I think each and every one of you people want it to grow on the council. But until we all pull together, it's not going to do it. I don't care what anybody says. I don't care what anybody gives money to this position, that position, or different fund of different items. Everybody's got to pull together. And I just want to get that off my chest. I think the bickering has to be stopped in department heads and everything else, because, I mean, you can talk to any department head, and there's turmoil. You can walk in this door, anybody downtown can feel, the minute you walk in this door, that there's tension in here. And I think it needs to be put to bed and rest and start backing each other up on everything, because that's the only way the city's going to grow.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to the item number six, the consent agenda. Minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 6th, 2025, minutes of a special council meeting of February 13th, 2025, cash receipts and treasures report for the January 2025, resolution approving a liquor license for hometown wine and spirits, 1501 Main Street, Class E retail alcohol license, term to expire March 27th, 2026, resolution approving a liquor license for Lucky's Irish Pub and Grub, 528 Blondo Street, Class C retail alcohol license, effective March 3rd, 2025, approve a device rental permit for Davenport Tobacco and Vape Incorporated, DBA Greenleaf Tobacco and Vape, 3360 Main Street, Suite 5, permit to expire June 30th, 2025, appointment of Steve Carmen to the Keokuk Public Library Board, term to expire July 1st, 2031, resignation of Gary Mortimer from the Keokuk Historic Preservation Commission, effective immediately, appointment of Melinda Rude to the Veterans Memorial Commission, term to expire June 1st, 2029, and the motion to pay bills and transfers listed in Register's number 5455 through 5458. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number seven is consider a resolution, but we will need to have a motion to take it off the table first.
Make a motion to bring off the table the resolution to assume Southeast Iowa Development Center loan from Keokuk Economic Development Corporation?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Item number seven, consider resolution to assume Southeast Iowa Development Center loan from Keokuk Economic Development Corporation. Do I have a motion to approve?
We already have a motion in a second. It's that discussion when it was tabled.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
Yes. I am not in favor of taking over this loan until said economic group dissolves, but in the event that I am outvoted on that, I think the resolution should be written correctly. We have the same resolution in front of us that we had back in December. There has been communication from the bank giving us information on the KEDC account and the amounts on the loan, so I am going to make a motion to amend the reading of the resolution to change the dates and the dollar amounts on that resolution. If you want to turn in your packets to the resolution, I can read the statement where I am making corrections, as I see it, whereas the current principal balance is $272,346.47. And whereas the payoff as of February 2025 is $273,179.57, and the daily interest is I would like a second to my motion to adjust the wording of the resolution.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, item number eight.
We're still, that was just-
We're still, got to go back, don't we?
Yep, that was just to-
amend it. So now we have to go back to item number seven and consider resolution to assume the Southeast Iowa Development Center loan from Keokuk Economic Development Corporation with the amendment.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item number eight, consider resolution to approve a contract with Keokuk Contractors Incorporated of Keokuk, Iowa to remove sediment from the Keokuk Boat Ramp near 1,000 Mississippi River Drive for a total of $54,142. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Plans and spec-
Brian, on-
Go ahead.
On this, it's got 150 by 60 by 4. Did they give you an idea about how far out into the river they were looking at going?
The 60 feet is out into the river.
Is that what that is? And that, is that from like where the winch, not the winch, but like the front of the parking meter or the parking curbs or whatever? Is it from that that you're going 60 feet out of?
It's actually going to be from where the water level is.
Where the water, okay. I'm just curious, just to get an idea, because I know it's over the years.
That'll still get us about 10 feet or so beyond the end of the concrete.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a quick note, the City of Keokuk requested proposals for removal of the sediment at the boat ramp located at 1,000 Mississippi Drive. The work consists of removing sediment from a 150 feet by 60 feet by 4 feet area and hauling the materials away after drying. The expected completion date is May 16th, 2025. Two proposals were received, and Keokuk Contractors Incorporated submitted the lowest proposal of $54,142. Any more discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Where will the sediment removed be placed while it is drying? Will it be placed on the boat ramp area, or will it be placed in a barge to dry where it's not going to interfere with boaters wanting to use the ramp area?
It will be placed in the gravel lot, kind of where the old south side used to be, and there will be erosion control put around it.
Okay, so boaters can still use the ramp area then?
Yeah, I mean, the reason why we're doing this is so we can put our docks in this year. We have so much silt, so boaters will still be, I mean, they won't necessarily be able to back in while they're digging, like during business hours, but it'll be stored far enough away that we're not going to interrupt the parking lot or anything down there.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick note, you know, we get a lot of calls during the week, during the year about different things that people complain about, and I would say the fact that we couldn't get the boat ramps in last year was probably second, right behind the streets, because everybody wants those boat ramps in, and we just didn't have the opportunity with the water going up and down them with the sediment. We just didn't get them in, so it is very important to the public. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution setting bid letting public hearing and award of contract for Grand Avenue 2025 reconstruction from North 17th to Boulevard Road project. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Plans and specifications for the Grand Avenue reconstruction project are complete. The reconstruction will be Grand Avenue from North 17th Street to Boulevard Road. I would therefore recommend that Wednesday, March 26th, 2025, at 10:00 AM be set as a date and time for receipt of bids for this project. We would further recommend that Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, at 5:30 PM be set as a date and time for a public hearing on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost and award of contract for the Grand Avenue 2025 reconstruction from North 17th Street to Boulevard Road project. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, consider resolution authorizing the mayor to sign offer to purchase real estate at 1728 J Street. Do I have a motion to approve? The property owned by the Harriet Wichita Estate at 1728 J Street, which is adjacent to the Oakland Cemetery and consists of 10 acres of land, has come on the market for sale in the amount of $60,000. The city has been looking to purchase extra space for Oakland Cemetery for some years, and now as available lots are very, now as available lots are very limited. I therefore request that the city council authorize the mayor to sign an offer to purchase real estate at 1728 J Street in the amount of $60,000. Any more discussion?
Yes, Director Carroll, how much of that acreage will you be able to utilize for cemetery space?
Currently, we would be able to use the front. You got a picture in your mind?
I've taken a tour of the property and everything.
So on the left-hand side, that comes around from the back and wraps up, is currently a landfill, technically the city's landfill that we just have an easement for. And then the back part is pretty hilly and a ravine, so right now it would just be the front part where the house sits until we clear it and we'll be able to fill it in.
Now, will you, before you go through the abstract process, like is there any potential liability on coming from an old landfill, you know, that we might run into with the EPA or some-
No. It's already, we haven't, the city currently has an easement across that property for the landfill, so we're responsible for it right now.
Okay, so no surprises, okay.
I haven't really gotten any estimates for that, like right now. Right now, we just have a purchase agreement with the contingency on the council voting on it. Our guys would be able to do a lot of the demo that we needed on some of the structures out there, the old house. We're probably looking at keeping the pole-type building for right now to use for our own storage. It's still in pretty good shape. Then we would end up getting prices on actual tree removal and filling in the ravine.
How much currently is a plot out there?
I believe our pots are $400. Right now, we are down to 74 full-size plots remaining in the cemetery. Over the last five years, we've been averaging 20 full-size burials per year.
I have a few questions. So I am estimating from my feeble experience with acreage that it appears to me like there wouldn't be much over three acres usable, because behind that is timber and very steep-sided ravine-type area. So I can't conceive of anything but that flat area being useful where the house and the building is. It seems like we're willing to pay $60,000 for something that is assessed at $43.7. That seems a little out of line. The land value alone was just $21,000 to $22,000, and the house was more than that, $25,000, I believe it was. I can't see spending that much money for that small part, usable parcel of property. I understand the crunch that you're under, but has any investigation been done about Sunset Memorial and how many plots might be left in it? It has an assessed evaluation somewhat closer to what you're willing to pay here, and it's nice and flat.
I mean, assessed valuation has nothing to do with appraised value or purchase value. That's just what we're taxed on, or what that property is taxed on. Sunset is a privately-owned cemetery in which I know with, before Kathy and I were both in our positions, had to deal with them in committee meetings on even trying to get them to mow the property. I don't know that they would be willing to sell that, and I can guarantee you, they probably wouldn't sell it for $60,000.
Okay, but in the fine paperwork here, the fine print, your, what do I want to say, bid expired yesterday. So is this a moot point at this point?
I don't believe so. I know the realtor that I dealt with on Monday knew this had to, it's contingent on a vote from the council at tonight's meeting.
Okay, but today's the 20th, and the date was the 19th that it was.
What fund will this come out of?
We will take it out of Cemetery Capital, and then we will adjust the budget for next year.
So from capital, capital improvement fund?
Yeah, Cemetery Capital Project Fund.
Because I know we are trying to not do any of that, you know, for a year or so, not to use any of that capital, you know, money we're going to try to save.
Well, so what we had discussed with the finance committee last week is we would purchase it out of capital, and then when we have to do our reestimate, then we would refund that.
Other side of that road, that's landfill.
Yes. Correct. That's the same landfill. It wraps down and around, and then comes back up to ravine on this property, which is another reason we were looking at it, is because of the landfill on there being our responsibility, and we don't own the property. The other one is not having a nuisance property owner by it, kind of like that was there before that just didn't take care of it. I don't even think they had water hooked up out there, and just trying to keep vandalism down out in the cemetery.
Brian, any estimate on approximately how many full-size lots we get out of an acre?
I would have to look at the survey plot for the cemetery. I don't know. Bob might know off the top of his head, but I'm not sure. I'd have to look at the plot map for sure.
And so there's approximately three acres that, with minimal work, gives us expansion room. And then the rest of the terrain, then, is it feasible? I know we've talked about chopping down trees, but then there's also been talks of ravines, so would there be the possibility of future work to minimize the drops of the hills and everything to convert some more land?
We would probably have to get an engineer consulted, and then obviously, we'd have to buy clay or dirt from somewhere to get hauled in. I know that Fort Madison Landfill always has that for sale, and it's, for us to work with them, it wouldn't be, it'd be cheaper than like market value to bring the fill in.
So it does, in the future, offer more than just the three acres for expansion? Okay.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 11, consider resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of not to exceed $7 million general obligation capital loan notes of the City of Kielkuk, State of Iowa, for essential corporation purposes and providing for publication of notice thereof. Do I have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
We just need a resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposition to authorize a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence of obligations of the city thereunder.
So the intention of these monies would be for continuing the road project plans of the $5 million bonds, and then the additional monies needed for the fire truck?
Yes. And it's not to exceed $7 million, so that doesn't mean that is what we would borrow. It's not to exceed that in case we come up with anything else that we needed, or if we wanted to make any changes. It would be for, basically for streets and infrastructure.
As I understand it, that will have a substantial impact on our property taxes, but anything valued under $100,000 will not be taxed over a certain point? I don't recall the exact wording, but...
So basically, we have to have the public hearing prior to the budget approval if we want to levy for any portion of that debt to be repaid with tax dollars. I think we'll probably schedule a workshop to decide what you guys want to do in the amount, but with the budget due April 30, we had to stay on track, getting the public hearing. I think there's further discussions we had.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, consider resolution authorizing the mayor to seek and hire an interim city administrator. Do I have a motion to approve? It's just resolution approving the mayor to seek and hire interim city administrator. Do we have any discussion?
Do we have any idea on salary or anything like that, or this will be like a negotiation process when you've identified someone?
This will be a negotiation process. I would need to sit down with Shannon and find out exactly what the monthly amount was paid to our previous city administrator and see where that falls within, how long a person would be here. I think we have reached out to someone, and I think that this interim person would be here at least till June 30 or June 31, I mean July 31, I'm sorry. But, and I will just tell you that I did reach out to Dave Hinton, who was here first before we hired Emmanuel, and he is willing to come back and help the city of Kielkuk. So we would just have to have that negotiation as to what he thought the amount of money that is that he needed, and he does not get insurance or benefits, so that takes the cost down some. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 13, consider resolution setting a public hearing on proposed property tax levy. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
As part of the city's budget process, staff must prepare a proposed property tax levy. The county auditor will then send out a proposed property tax levy notice to each property owner. A public hearing on the notice must be held. The purpose of the notice and the hearing is to spotlight the change in property tax levy requested. The hearing must be held as a standalone meeting, and it is on the agenda and be on the agenda and have minutes. No other city business may be on the agenda or discussed during this meeting. Staff recommend setting April 3, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. for this hearing. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14, do we have any council liaison reports? Okay, item number 15, staff reports. I know Seth does.
Yeah, I just have a quick staff report. About three weeks ago, we had officers called over to a house for a medical emergency. They arrived within two minutes and provided some life-saving efforts. I don't want to go into detail due to the sensitive nature of that call, but those officers did receive commendations for that, and it is Officer Allison Dade, Sergeant Pat Hall, and Captain Tanner Walden.
Great job, guys.
Okay, Pam, go for it. No, I'm just going to, so today Calvin Stevens, a resident of Kielkuk, wanted to meet with Casey I and Carissa, and Steve Andrews also were at the meeting. He has a proposal, he's organizing a volunteer initiative called Kielkuk Cares to assist elderly residents, individuals with physical limitations, and those facing financial hardships with property maintenance. There's over 30 citizens that have expressed interest in supporting the effort. He is asking for some city support just during the fall and citywide cleanup, that if we could actually waive or reduce the tipping fees. So I let him know that I would request that for the council, and if we could do that, we could have a resolution on that. I don't, I mean, I don't think it would be any more than what, it would just be tough for them to come in and get citywide vouchers if they're going to help a larger number of people with removing debris or something. So if we could just let them go out and just like do a large dump load a couple times instead of trying to use the vouchers on that, it would be easier for everyone. And we came up, I mean, we all was kind of brainstorming, and Carissa, her community that she was Panapride? Panapride? And they have a porch cleanup, so, I mean, there was all kinds of ideas, and so I think this is a great initiative. You know, he can start small, and we can go from there, and...
There wasn't a porch cleanup, that was Casey's idea.
That was Casey's idea.
Casey had the porch cleanup, but I mentioned that Panapride, they tackle abandoned houses, and they have a mission on beautifying the community, which kind of aligns with Calvin's idea.
Yes. So it was a great idea. I'm going to go ahead and email you all this letter that he did send, and if you do not have a problem with waiving the fees for the transfer station during the citywide cleanup area, I mean, it's, we can put an amount on it if you would like, but, you know, just to make sure that we're all under the, you know, on the same page.
We have a meeting of Great River tomorrow morning, I'll bring that up.
Anybody else? Item number 16, I need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant of Iowa Code, Chapter 21.5, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered, and when necessary, to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and the individual requests closed session.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll be back in a little bit, guys.
Did you like the background of the box music? Did you think it was a little bit of background?
And that's pretty though. I did almost have a gun in my hand. She pushed it down and made it go out. But that makes it seem pretty much long day.
Um.
Um. Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I was a little bit okay. Oh, okay. All right.
Here's the. Good. Well, it's made me. I'm gonna go ahead. You could sing. Thank you. So. Definitely. So. It's. They're finally just suddenly been like four minutes later. But it didn't. Especially. Especially. Yeah, that's actually happened already.
I mean. I mean. I know. Yeah. It's good everything. I mean, this is what's going on.
No, uh. That area just. I was gonna use the light. Yeah.
Uh. Yeah. I heard. We should not have asked for it yet.
So. I haven't.
What's doing? I gotta fill up that signal. Okay. Yes. I love it.
I don't really work. They're like.
I would see. What is this thing?
So. They all. Seven hundred fifty five. So. So what's the worst?
I think it never touched them. Yes. So. And then like. Very cute though. Okay. Um. Yeah. You wanna like. I don't know. Yeah. I mean, I think. That's. I like. Well.
Tell us about. Good. This is long. Yeah. Where's?
Okay. Well. The next thing is we should get. More.
For sure.
Because she's having.
Yeah.
She's so. But I know. That's enough. You. You have a hat. So. Yeah. You wanna like. I'm going for a race attack.
Is he a very good football player?
Yeah. Right. Which is amazing, but um. Um. Like he did something, thank you for coming. You know, last election. He's a little.
I also think that's.
That wasn't just a picture.
Uh.
It's a male to the shadow of the. I'm like talking to him. I wanna see like.
You're right.
Not.
See what she got. Then I go with the.
Oh, my God.
So. Thirty five thousand.
Oh, no. Yeah.
But I do have. I'll try to. We're.
Are you supposed to now? That'd be serious. For some months. Is that a plan? Bottom sheet.
And then what? Do you know?
I wish. She's. Start getting my shop open.
All right.
Oh, I'm asking. You want some more?
I can really.
Um. Can I have that?
And then. They know that. All right.
Or she may. But then same. You can't. That's why. They just stuck. Try to go up. You can find.
I think. Nothing is standing.
I'm gonna be teaching. A lot of. But. What do you want? You should pick it up.
I was just. I went to do something. It was. I went to those.
Okay. Seriously.
Somebody just got. I went down to the office.
I know, but I thought we got such things. So. I think you just need the one. You want. Want to talk. Cameras. Like. Forensics. People. Oh, I know. That's seriously though. Um. Lawrence comes back from the front. Seriously, photographs. They'll have to be back here. Yes. No, you really shouldn't. I was like. Yeah, she's running. She does. Yes. Yeah. Um. Seriously, so your home is. And David, we should get. I mean, it's not. It's not. Which like. Yeah.
That's.
Yeah. Yeah. Just that you just can't do that. So. You can run off. He deserves it. I guess.
They prefer.
He wants to have this. Yeah. He. People can.
There's all the victories that everybody gets.
I know. I'm. I think her. I mean, I like. Yeah. Is he there? Really? Where you?
My parents could do it.
Oh, that's right.
But they're not.
Well, that was just the one side now. And then. Um. I have a show. Um. More. It's chaos. But. And then just. Yeah.
Um.
Never. You're gonna have to relax. You're gonna get. Shut the damn. One more practice. Yeah, I can see what you're thinking.
I can't do it this time. Is there? Is there? So I got her. But.
Yeah.
On the end here, like. Like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. We're like. Anyone. Did you? He said. Eighteen. So. I think it's. Is how you can go on. Did you say? Well. If you're. Early. I know. Yeah. There is. You want? Yeah, I just. Yeah. You better. I agree. I don't wait. Yeah. So. Oh, wait.
I did. Oh, I did. Room people that we had. Uh. Why?
That had. I could see you.
I can see you.
Okay.
First of all. They have one. And we should call them all, tell them they have to come back.
No, no. Just walk out. You're.
No.
Oh, I have. We have to answer for every. Three to six hundred. Four or five plots.
That's minus seven. Oh, yeah.
A lot. That's a lot of. A lot of, uh. Burials.
Twenty eight years.
That's like.
Oh.
Yeah. Where's the? Yeah, sometimes. Still here.
Not that I'm aware of.
I got moved. You check before you step down. I might really do that.
Okay. We're at item number seventeen. Any new business?
Um. Brian, I believe you were able to look up that information about how many plots per acre for the cemetery while we were out of the room?
Yeah, um. Anywhere from three to six hundred per acre. For full-size burials.
So that buys us a lot of time then. A lot of time.
Another thing we need to look at, and I just talked to Bob, we haven't upped our. The prices for our plots in a number of years. And I know Hamilton's. Hamilton Cemetery is six hundred dollars per plot. City of Pejovka is still at four hundred dollars per plot, so. That might be something to look at too.
Okay, any? Any more new business? Item number eighteen, I need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's go home. Let's go home.